We'll come to order. Our first order of business is several bond releases. So.
Okay, so the first bond release is 129 Winter Street. A watershed special permit was issued for this project in July of 14 to allow the construction of a 416 square foot addition to an existing garage. So they really just went off the back of an existing garage. The engineer certification letter has been received as well as the as-built. However, there's been one change reflected in the engineer certification letter. The original plan called for a drip trench to run along the side of the garage and the rear of the garage. A modification has been made that the drip trench is only at the rear, so two foot wide, two foot deep stone drip trench, and roof leaders directing all the runoff from the roof to that section. The project was within the non-distributable zone, so it was about 150 feet from a wetland that does lead to the lake.
And you're okay with all that?
It's a change. I don't see any record of the change being discussed prior. They've submitted it, so it obviously concentrates more runoff to this rear of the structure as opposed to both the rear and the side. It's treated over land down to the wetland, which is 150 feet away.
Okay. Does anybody have any comments, concerns?
Well, what Jean said, by putting gutter on, and I don't know if they put a single, do you not have to put a single liter or multiple liters?
A single liter down the side.
So the applicant's not here, right?
The engineer is not here.
Okay. That, you know, this is the area where it's supposed to have a drip edge, and I assume that's a gable roof going this way, so it'd take the water this way and this way, or I'm not sure on that. Now they're putting, they took nothing on this side, so they're putting it all here, which is the lowest point. And if you have a single liter for probably about 650 square feet of roof area to the gables, you get a, heavy rain, it's gonna go right past the drip trench.
So you want to, let's invite their engineer back and ask them why they didn't do what they said they were gonna do.
Okay.
Is everybody okay with that?
Good.
Okay, good idea.
Okay, the next one is 500 Grapevine Road.
So just by the record, we did not release the bond in this case because they hadn't conformed with the conditions of the bond. So the next one is the Country Club?
Yes. 500 Grapevine Road. Again, a watershed special permit was issued in December of 11 to allow the reconstruction and resurfacing of four tennis courts and replacement of existing fence. Same thing, an engineer certification letter was submitted by Neve Moran, and an as-built plan has been submitted. There were several changes, all of which appear to be minor, to the original plan documented in the memo. Conservation had been heavily involved in this project. The tennis courts do sit very close to the lake. The engineer had worked with conservation to approve all these at the time. I've talked to the conservation field inspector. She said they did work hand in hand through these changes. They had approved them, and they released their bond on this project last year. So they have no remaining funds. I don't know if you want to contribute. So Peter visited the site today.
So I wasn't anywhere with the project, so I visited today. And, oh.
This, you want to write the technical?
Yes.
Okay, we're discussing that one, we were just writing now, so. So I just reviewed that conservation had released the bond, that the as-built certification letter came in with some minor changes identified. And Peter did visit the site today as I communicated to you, so Peter was gonna comment.
So one of the comments was there's some demolition debris that's pushed down towards the shore of the lake. It looks like it may be one of the old tennis net support poles with about a five-foot-long and three-foot-wide concrete base that's down the bank from the, would be the northwest corner of the courts, almost to the rock shoreline.
Right out into the water?
Yeah.
Fence posts?
Well, I mean, I can't tell, but it looks to me like it could possibly be one of the previous posts to hold the tennis net. It looked like it was about that size, but it may have been one of the former fence posts. I don't know.
I was gonna say, 'cause we didn't take out, we re-sleeved them, but we didn't take them out of the ground.
Might have been one of the fence posts, I don't know, but it's probably about 30 feet from the corner of the tennis courts.
All right, we can get rid of that.
But it's not visible from the court. It's just over the slope, right up against the rocks.
Yeah, we can get rid of that. I don't think that was from this project.
Okay.
It doesn't, 'cause we didn't do anything with putting new posts in.
Yeah. It's something that pulled, you know, was, had a cement-like footing.
Oh, yeah.
To support the metal post, and that was pulled out and then slid down the bank.
Yeah.
So maybe from some prior thing, I don't know.
You're okay with releasing the bond pending removal of the debris? Does anybody else have any questions? Somebody like to make a motion to that effect? Are you gonna make the motion?
Oh, I thought you were gonna make the motion. I move we release the bond pending removal of the debris right along the lakefront.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay. Last one is...
Can I take a picture when we're done and send it to, uh, removing?
Yeah. That's fine, however you wanna do it. You could have her come out.
I need a picture, but, yeah.
Just take a look, that's fine.
Thank you.
Zero Methuen Ave?
What's that?
This one's a little trickier. So Zero Methuen Ave was a one-lot definitive subdivision kind of across the street from McAvoy Field, so on, off of Sutton Street. There was an existing road that was extended and a driveway brought to it for Zero Methuen Road. The applicant has, they've submitted a deed, which I want to bring up. So the house has been constructed and it's been sold, and Form M's and Form I's were submitted, and the covenant is still in place. A Form J was never done to release it. So what I'd like to accomplish tonight is to at least get approval on the Form J.
Which releases the lot?
Which releases the lot, which has already been constructed, sold, and occupied. A certificate?
So much for releasing the lot as security.
Yes. So in addition to that, the decision called for a, sorry, deed restrictions must be in place on the lot regarding further subdivision of the lot as noted in Special Condition Six. That is noted on the plans as required in the decision. And easement documents and maintenance agreements concerning private driveway must be submitted and reviewed and approved by town council. Now, I don't have any of those in the file. The applicant, the developer has informed me that he worked his way through all this checklist with the town planner at the time, and what was approved was this language in the deed, which I'm trying to open here.
Well, let's make any, if he did all the things that he's supposed to do, then we're not gonna give him any money.
In addition to that, the DPW department visited today, and they do have a concern. So he knows that he's not getting his bond money back tonight, and he didn't have an issue with that. It was more around the language that the deed pretty much just is subject to any conditions, restrictions, and notes as entitled in the subdivision plan is what's incorporated in the deed, and that has been conveyed at this point.
Well, I mean, flip the deed to town council and see if he's okay with it.
Okay. So I don't have anything in the file saying that it did get reviewed, so that's fine. I'm just looking for direction on this one.
Yeah, okay.
And I think on that too, I mean, it says that restrictions, covenants, and easements of record, and it refers to the decision. The decision says they have to do the maintenance agreement, so we don't have a copy of the maintenance agreement, nor is that recorded. So at very least...
Did they, extension of the roadway could build according to our specifications with grade and construction?
Yeah. So Tim Willett has signed off that he's fine with the water, sewer, and the roadway.
I mean, that's a step, because you have to do that, so.
Yeah. Again, it was a case, I think you heard at a meeting somewhat recent, that a roadway bond wasn't established on 166 Salem Street that Jack Cahill was in. He's trying to get two lots released at the time. The roadway bond, which was specified in this decision, was never administered either. So all that's on the project is a $5,000 site opening bond. The roadway bond had never been established.
Yeah, we have a, we have the lot, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
They were sold.
Yeah.
Okay.
So much with the conveyance attorney, I guess. I don't know.
Yeah.
Best judgment on that.
So I did communicate with the developer, the concerns I had regarding this. I told him I would just talk to the board tonight and get a sense of what direction you'd like to go in. I'll send it to town council, and he's gonna contact the DPW directly on their concern.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so we're through all of our bond releases. We're on to the public hearings, which, the one public hearing is odds good solar, odds good permit for solar project. And if, can you give us a short summary of what has happened since the last time we substantively looked at this?
Okay. So since the last time everybody's plan set was submitted, this past Friday, the plan set includes a reduction on the south side of approximately 70% of the arrays from the September 15 filing or so. That, of the 70%, 50% has been relocated to the roof, and 50% has been relocated to the rear or the west side of the parking lot. There's been no real material change in terms of stormwater, landscaping, any other type of plan. Lighting plan came with a narrative that specified they'll meet standards and regulations once final plans are, final design is approved. I think the best picture to look at that is the parking array. Which I should have... Sorry, I thought I knew which one it was, but... All right, I'll bring that up in a second, but that would be the best one to depict those relocated panels. I'll find that. But the Mass DOT has sent in a letter, so last time that was a big open item. They've sent in that aerospace review is not required. So any further change, or if FAA requirement has any purview, that they keep watching this project and may have additional comments. And other than that, the peer review has gone back out, civil responded again, which you have today, and the stormwater review is still applicable because there was no changes to the stormwater design in this pass.
What I'd like to do is to focus primarily in our discussion on the changes. We want to understand what the changes are, exactly what is different, and then the implications of any of the changes. And as we go through, I think people need to feel free to ask questions about the substantive impact of the changes. But I really want to stay focused on that. I want to move through this quickly. So, can you, Jean, put something up that's got, we've gotta see some pictures here?
I'll try it. So this is the one I was trying for. So this shows the parking array. The south side of the parking lot is depicted with the two yellow columns to your far right. So that is the side closest to Holt Road. In the original design, there was seven rows of parking arrays, so it's down to two. The west side is the green footprint, so 50% of the panels was relocated to that rear. And the north side that's depicted in orange has remained the same.
So 50% of the green won't be there?
Nope. 50% of what had been on the south side.
And we've gotta be crisp. We've gotta be really focused on this, okay?
There were seven rows of parking here.
Yeah, okay.
That is what we used to do.
Okay, good, okay. And the same, same kind of thing on the green.
And what was removed from here was added here and then into the roof.
All right. I want somebody to start at the top, explain everything about what was before and what was after. So if you could take us through all the changes from the old to the new.
Good evening, Dan Gary.
So on October, around October 1st, we met in front of the Board of Selectmen.
I don't want to go through that. Just tell us what the change, just, I don't want to just be that. I want to know exactly fundamentally what you changed.
We took 338 kilowatts out of the area that's, if you look to the area that's shown as number one, the yellow area to the right. So that is...
Now, let's, again, orient us to the street here.
The top?
One person talk.
I'm gonna stay here while he talks, that way I can point things out.
Okay.
So this is Osgood Street here. This is the main building. This is the south lot, so this would be heading towards, like, the high school. This would be heading north towards April. So what Dan's talking about first is removing from here. Go ahead, Dan.
So in the area labeled number one, which is the yellow block, that's what we've been calling the south parking lot. The south parking lot from, was, as Jean mentioned, was originally seven rows. Around September 15, it was reduced down to six rows. So coming out of, coming into last week, at the suggestion of the town in the meeting, the plant, the Board of Selectmen's intent, we were able to remove 338 kilowatts, which is two rows, two of the six rows, from that yellow area, and put those on the roof. And we were additionally able to remove another two rows, about 338 kilowatts, and move that down to the green area, which is down on the west lot. So if, as you're, as you're standing on the property, the west lot is out back. It's a big parking lot. You can not really see from anywhere you'd be visiting on the property. So that, that leaves or remaining about 333 kilowatts in that parking lot, those two array canopies that are shown there in number one.
All right. So you moved from one to the roof and one to three. Is that all?
That's it.
And what's the blue on the right-hand side?
The blue is another parking canopy area that's, that didn't change. It's, it's still about...
Is that behind the building?
400 kilo, it is. It's on the way into the, if you're driving into the loading dock area on the south side of the building, you pass around that.
Okay.
Behind the cooling towers.
Okay.
Where is that gas pump, just so I can...
It's right about where, see where the number two is?
Yeah.
There's a, there's a block right above it that jets out. That's, that's the pump. That's the biodiesel pump.
Those yellow cloudy-looking things, I think that those are...
This is, this is...
Illumination, did you say?
So this is, this is the lighting plan. The best graphic we had was, happened to have the lighting plan over, drawn over on it. So in, in order to keep it consistent with what we've shown in the past, we've kept it with the lighting plan. So you can, you can ignore the yellow bubbles. The focus is the fancy colored blocks.
Where's the star from?
Off to the, to the left side of the sheet.
Sorry, I'm trying to get that. Yeah. So you want to slide that over to some other rock? I'll show you where.
Do we do it side?
So this is one. This is two. This is the right. G is four.
So G is the north side.
Five is here and here. So one, two, three, four, and five. So you can see all these out on a physical bar.
The orientation of this picture is different, Laura?
Yeah, it's a different orientation.
Yep.
Okay, so that's, but does anybody else have any questions on that specific thing? Does everybody? And can you tell us the, the footprint of the different pieces, the relative size, like the size of one and four in particular?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the second column is the square footage of the, the net square footage of the array in that area. We also have in there the covered parking spots that are underneath the arrays that are parking canopies.
This is the area, one, two, three, four, and five is the roof. This is the square footage of each area, including the roof. This is the number of covered spaces and the total, and then this is the back of lots for each location.
So when you say area in the second column, is that the area of the cumulative area of the panels, or is that the area of all the parking spaces that are covered by the panels?
That's the area of the parking spaces in the aisleways that are covered by the panels.
And the aisleways, sorry.
I'm sorry, Jean?
And the aisleways?
And the aisleways.
So it's a whole footprint around there.
It's a, it's a net area, right.
So that total at the bottom of 451,000 is just over 10 acres worth of covered area?
So this is on the ground, that's on the roof.
Very good, thank you.
248 is...
So it'd be about five acres on the ground.
They said it also included the roof.
Right.
So right, yeah, five is the roof.
So it isn't the cover, it isn't all covered.
Which is why for covered parking spaces, that's...
That's what I asked. Yeah, but it's not, it's not.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
The question was, of the 451,000 square feet, is that just the ground or the roof at the ground and it's still with the ground?
The roof and the ground. So there's a, right below number four on the left column, there's a canopy subtotal, which is 202,000 square feet, which is the total of the...
On the ground.
On the ground. And, and the 248 is the roof.
Right. So I'm correct that three was high when you started? Then you took it way down, then you brought it basically back to where it was.
Three is down from the, from the plan of 915, which is the plan that's been to the Board of Selectmen. Three is down 11%. One is up, down 77%. Two is down 4%. And four is down 4%. So every section of the plan that had carports in it was reduced by at least some amount.
Right.
And the increase...
But the last version we saw had very little in three.
I, yeah, I don't think three has changed significantly since the, the plan that was here on October 15 that I don't think we ever ended up putting up on the screen and discussing. But if you reviewed it either in advance or after the hearing, that three has not really changed since the last meeting. One's gone down, and, I'm sorry.
Three.
Oh, there you go. So the numbers are there.
That's the 450.
Right.
Yeah. So I have a question about that, the three. As I'm looking at the diagram from October 15, three has four rows of canopies. And then the one that you just showed us from October 30th, three has six rows of canopies.
I'm sorry, two hasn't changed, three's gone?
Correct.
I'm sorry.
Three's changed quite a bit.
Three has changed.
Yeah, see, what happened with three is it was high to begin with, then it went way down, and then it's come back up again.
Yes.
It's almost back to where it was when it started, right?
Yes, but the footprint remains out of the ANRAD that was submitted. So the wetland delineation that has been shown, they are outside of the buffer zones to that.
Right.
And they've remained out with these added panels.
Okay. And this is the area that's pretty much hidden behind buildings.
All the way in the back, as close as you can get to the elevator, on the huge surface.
So there is a non-jurisdictional, really drainage swale that runs right along the edge of these. Jennifer Hughes reviewed that today. She had concerns. We consulted with Lisa Eggleston. The canopy itself will overhang that drainage swale, but the columns themselves are on the previous pavement. They're not in the swale. Lisa felt that as long as we could still access that drainage swale for cleanup of any debris, that it was okay. So that review did happen late this afternoon.
Okay.
How deep is the swale?
I don't know how deep it is.
Couple feet, maybe?
Couple feet.
Couple feet.
And it's non-jurisdictional, but Jennifer still had enough concern because the canopy overhang, overhung the area, so.
So, any more questions on just physically what happened? We can, because then we can switch to the implications if there's any questions about what's the impact of the changes. So everybody...
Just, this has not changed at all, the amount of megawatts that you're gonna be able to generate. This has not been, this is not being impacted by maybe not getting the same amount of sunlight. The trees won't. So everything else is the same, except they're in different places.
Okay.
So one of the, I don't think I said beginning.
Plan set was sent to the state fire marshal's office again. They've reviewed them. There's no change to the parking lot or fire department vehicle access. So again, Chief Melnikus has sent that information and said he agrees with the fire department, the fire marshal's review. So there was no material change to that.
Okay. So...
Have we asked the fire department whether having more of these panels up on the roof at all interferes with any plans that they would anticipate they would need in fighting fires in a building?
No, I think that's what they looked at.
But that's what they, yes.
That's what they looked at. That's the whole purpose of that, so you could get fire access to the...
Right, so they have fire access to the, to the building and the...
What I was thinking is if they're up and they need to get onto the roof.
Yeah.
Will having the panels up there interfere with that?
No, they know. They've looked at the whole plan, right?
Right.
So they know exactly what they're, you know, what this is, is proposed, so. Does anybody have any questions on, with the changes, what are impacts of the changes that you want to go over, right? Lynn, do you have any questions?
No, I understand the changes. I mean, there's still other stuff on our list, but...
Right, right. But I want to, now, in terms of the feedback that we've gotten from our professional consultants, what have they said?
There you go, it's there.
I know.
Yeah, so these, these are the ones done that I really felt, the civil review deferred a lot to the board, so they don't strictly comply with the bylaw regulations. The applicant has stated that on some of them, that they don't think the regulations apply, and if they do, they respectfully request a waiver. So the civil engineer has deferred some items to you. And in stormwater, Lisa has made recommendations that, again, she's deferring to the board whether you want to condition certain items.
Okay.
And it's significant. I mean, there's several, there's several items in civil and Lisa's review.
That are still open or...
Still open or a decision on a waiver needs to be made. It's either conditioned that...
Okay, let's come back to that and let's go over other questions that people have at this point, on any of the other things that are open that we haven't gotten sufficient answers to at this point, so.
I think I, I think one of the biggest ones I think is open is what's the underside color of the, whatever you want to call them, and what's the top color of whatever you want to call them? Your electronic device is attached to, you know, is the underside white or the gray? We've seen different pictures of them, and is the top color gonna be white or gray?
Yeah, they're, so they're solar panels.
Okay.
The underside is white. They're 15% transmittal of, for light.
With the posts, the columns are gonna be white? Is it, everything is gonna be white?
No. So, so starting with the solar panels, the underside of the solar panel's white, the top side is, is glass. It's got a dark, dark blue, almost navy blue tone underneath the glass. The parking structures, the canopies, would be galvanized steel. So they'll be a gray, subdued gray steel color.
Galvanized steel, unpainted?
Yes, galvanized steel, unpainted.
And the clips and the hardware and all those type of...
So any, any, the, the purlins underneath the structure, again, galvanized steel. The clips and the hardware are all, the hardware's all stainless steel?
Stainless, so all the connectors are stainless steel, white underneath, stainless, and then a blue-gray?
There's, there's some great photos in one of the presentations from, I think, four, about a month ago.
Which, which... Which, 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 is there any which are identical in color?
Yes, there was one identical in color and style to what we had proposed. It was labeled additional material for the planning board, and I'll find the file.
Remember which?
Which site?
Which site? I visited the Lincoln High School site.
And those are white, right?
Yeah, that...
Yeah.
This particular site was not a local site. This, this exact style that we're using was not shown in any of the local pictures. I mean, there's, there's a number that are very similar. And it wasn't this one, Jean, it was, I'm sorry, it may have been this one, it may, it may be a couple slides down. I think you were right. Yeah, it was, was not this one then, it was follow-up answers for, I'm going to find it, I have it right here. I think it was called example sites. Solar site examples for the canopy. It was dated on... Sorry, let me get the date on this. It was 9/11, nine, the date was 9/11.
You had one site in New Jersey, you said it was similar, but you weren't proposing.
Well, while it's coming out, is it okay to walk this around? I know the public can see it, but that's...
What is it?
It's titled solar sites and examples for planning board.
Okay, we don't have copies of this to put up on the...
It's, it was, this was put up about a month, month and a half ago.
Which site was it? Which...
It's called, it's the one with the Osgood Solar that's proposed.
Okay.
Yep, so it's this, the second slide.
Do you have the meeting that was at?
It was dated 9/11, and it was the fourth attachment. Solar sites, examples for planning board.
Which meeting?
I'm sorry?
What meeting? Do you have my meeting?
This is 915. Subject line is 915, 1600 Osgood Street Materials.
No. It's, it's not that, it's not that. The first... It's this one right here. So solar canopy sites is the title of the present gentleman's...
Second page. Okay.
Okay.
Is that the picture?
That's the picture. So the canopy you see there, there's, there's no, you know, the landscaping is separate, we haven't proposed that. But the footing, the column, the purlins and the beams are all what we'll be using. This is, this is the exact mounting system. The underside of the modules you can see there is white, so it's a white back sheet. You can see there's a little bit of light that comes through them. All the electrical components are tucked away nice and neat, they come into combiner boxes up on the, up overhead, they go into combiner boxes that are in the steel, and then come back down into the ground, so the wiring's all concealed into National Electric Code standards.
Many of the other sites, like Whole Foods, have painted the columns white, Uniq, America painted the columns white, the New Jersey one have painted the columns white. If you look, most of them have painted those columns, opposed to having exposed galvanized steel.
Most columns are not painted, but some are, I agree. The galvanized steel, you know, that, that's the coating that we've proposed at this time.
You don't have a problem with, suggested you do the alternative?
We can ask the client.
Do you have the Lincoln High School thing?
If they can consider that.
So this was Lincoln Sudbury?
Yeah, Lincoln Sudbury.
That's one I just had up.
Yeah, bring that, can you really blow that up?
That's painted.
I don't remember that that was necessarily painted, it was almost like that was the color of the...
That's painted. Look at, you can see the one on Staples is not painted. That's a fresh shot. And Boston Properties is not painted, but that one is painted. You can look at the ones on, Danversport's painted, Rutgers is painted. But if you look at New Jersey and Whole Foods, you'll see they're much sharper looking, aesthetically pleasing.
Yeah, Cisco, Cisco is not painted.
I assume we'll get to this, but there's some plants there next to the, next to the columns, that I assume that we're going to get to the plantings that we're going to add to this?
Yes.
Good.
We'll get to that.
Can we go back to the first photo that we were searching for?
The one that's the same as ours?
Yes.
The front door is...
That's it. Can you go up a little? No, no, other way, sorry. A little more, okay, right there. So, one of the changes that you had previously made, if I recall this correctly, is at each of the support posts, you've got some type of a double line hash mark area...
Yes.
To maintain the distance with cars. Is there also curbing there, as there is in this photo, around and sort of protecting the support?
No. No, they, by not having, the way we did it is certainly protection enough for support. It's very similar to parking lot lights, except parking lot lights usually come into the parking space. In this case, we've, we've moved the parking space to keep them separate.
So your question, okay, that really is at the end of any aisleways you don't have?
At the end of aisleways, no.
I think that was one of the things that was noted in the review, was curbing. That's why I ask.
Are you writing all these things down?
It is in the review, that they have...
Okay, this is in the Hancock?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
The difference in our design is that where that aisle is, that island right there, that's parking spots in our design. So we're not moving parking further, you know, we're preserving as much park, since these are up closest to the building, we're preserving as much park as we can up close to the building.
Looks pretty close to the building there.
So I think it's in both.
Jean, did you, did you take down the comment about the color? The white versus...
I have that, yep.
Yeah.
When you relocate some of the panels to the roof, how will they be mounted on the roof?
The intent is to keep them mounted, as we showed in probably one of the first presentations. It's a, it's a ballasted flat roof system, so they're mounted very low profile to the, to the roof. We can show a picture if you, if you need to see it, but for...
No, I just wondered, you're not going to have the I thing, you're going to have typical roof mounts?
It's, it's very possible that we will have some arrays that have to be mounted on, sort of, that's called panelization, where you take a number of solar panels and put them, you know, one or two panels high. They're, they're not going to be very, very large structures like you see in the park, that's, I think that was 11 modules high.
But I thought you had told us before that everything that was mounted on the roof would not be visible. Is that, are you changing that, or is that...
We, we, these may or may not, once, once they get mounted this way, they may or may not be visible. They're, you can't see much on the roof at all.
Well, may or may not, does, either, either they are or they're not, and you've got to tell us how high they're going to be.
Well, you had previously, I think, shown us some photos that compared the combing on the roof with the height of the roof-mounted panels. So I was assuming that all of the roof-mounted panels would be like you'd previously shown us. But what I'm hearing now is that that's not the case.
Everything that's currently proposed on the roof is, is intended to be ballasted in flat roof. And so that's, maybe that's where I should, should leave it at this time. If, if for some reason, a struct, so we have yet to complete the structural review, if there's structural reasons why modules have to be attached and, and come in in a different structural approach, they, they may have to be slightly higher. These are not high, I, I don't think you'd be able to see them from the ground.
But you understand, you would have to come back before us then, because we're, we would approve a plan.
Yes.
Okay. I mean, but I know, the language tonight is, it may or may not be, it could be.
That's another one of the part downs.
Yeah, I, I...
Just remembering that, we were... My question was clear. In the previous presentation, we asked what the profile on the roof was, and we were shown either a photo or a sketch that showed two things in relation to each other. One was from the top of the roof, the height of the combing on the edge of the roof, and the second was where the panels would be on the roof relative to that edge combing. And it was very helpful to understand how they were mounted. And so what, what I'm asking is, having told us that that's what the roof mount will be, if it is different, we just need to see that.
Yeah, at this time, there is no intent to differ that. The elevations we gave you, the degrees, the mounting, the parapet, everything that we gave you is what we are seeking approval for. We did add an extra 383 kilowatts to the roof, and as we lay all of that out, if we end up having to take any of those panels and do it any different than what we've presented to you, we would in fact have to come back and show you that difference.
Can you just tell me what, for us, what 383 kilowatts, how many panels is that?
It's about 1,200 modules, I believe.
So 1,200 modules is 1,200, I'm just trying to understand, like...
About 1,200 desktops.
1,200 desktops.
Okay, thank you.
Now, you had mentioned something about a structural review. When I, when I've looked on, for solar companies, and they talk about putting solar panels on top of particularly flat roofs, they talk about the need to do an engineering review to be sure that the roof is able to support the thing. And I realize these panels are not that heavy, but not all roofs are that solid 100 percent. And are you going to do an engineering review?
So is it part of, is it part of the pulling, the applying for a building permit? We are, at that point, you know, much further along than we, we are at this point, but at that point, we're completing construction drawing sets, doing structural engineering to CMR 780, Chapter 16, structure of buildings, looking at roofs, membranes, structures, integrity of the roofs. It's absolutely required.
Do you know offhand approximately what the maximum weight per square foot that you're going to put on top of the roof would be?
Would you not? We know that we went in there for panels previously, and we met the code requirement. Can we design? I hope it is the way that's up there right now.
Couple hundred kilowatts?
So there's a, you know, there's 1,200 desks up there right now, and we did the exact same thing when we did that. We went, we got the structural analysis, we reviewed it, we brought it to the building department, the building inspector had to review it, and we had to comply with CMR in order to get the permit to, code of mass regulations.
Yeah, let's, let's, I think there is a building process that has to be followed. It's not our jurisdiction, so let's...
No, but I think we should include that, the conditions.
No, but we have to, we have to include that in the conditions, if, if we approve this, that they have to go through that process, and if it creates any changes to the decision, then they have to come back to us.
Right.
Correct.
So does, do we want to march through the Hancock?
I have a couple things before we go through Hancock. The spaces between the carports, you added the space to comply with the length of the building requirement. Approximately, how many spaces do you think you have? I think there were four foot spaces.
I don't understand the question.
You, you broke up the panels, they were 610 feet long, and then you broke them up into, I think, 200 foot sections or something? So, do you know how many?
Pathways that we got, we put in the plan.
There's a pathway to comply with articulation.
It went through, we had Hancock review. Do we know the total number of spaces, gaps?
Fall bar. I mean, were they 200 feet every 200 feet, so that we'd have three...
I, I believe it's just under 200 feet.
On the south side.
Imagine.
My, my point is, I think they're going to be a life safety hazard, because you're going to have water and ice dripping off of it, because now you're going to have a space, you have sun, you have solar, the whole tent of panels, you're going to have edges where they're going to drip. If they were contiguous, or there was a landscaping bed there, that would solve the problem. So that's a huge concern of mine, because I know how winters are, and you are going to get snow dripping off the edges of those. It may make sense if we're willing to do it, I don't know what the board's opinion is, is go back to having them contiguous.
Or we could do the landscaping, which is what we want.
Right, but you won't get much light in those areas, though, so, yeah.
Or you do low...
Yeah, we could, you could do some low light landscaping or something, but there has to be something.
You want to carry the...
Yeah, but we can't have, we can't, you can't have a drip, drip edge with nothing to absorb it, basically.
May I come back to one item that was brought up earlier with respect to the, to the ends of the rows? Rick Waite wanted to just explain one thing that, this might be a good time to address that.
Thank you, Rick Waite from Meridian Associates. Could you just scan up a little? The question was on the curbing. If, if you look down to the second pole in the middle of the array, there's no curbing around that, that pole coming down. The reason why this one, in this particular installation, has curbing around is because it's right at the edge of the traveled way. On all of our arrays, the first pole doesn't exist until at a minimum you get into the, after the first parking spot. So it's nowhere near the edge of the traveled way, and the pole's also protected by a concrete ballast like this one is. So the difference between their plan and ours is that we're not right along the traveled way. The comment that Hancock made wasn't in regards to the safety issue here. The curbing that they were talking about was in relationship to buffer planting, and their comment was whether or not the board, they left it up to the board, deferred it to them as to whether or not they wanted to waive that because of the landscaping plan that we proposed outside of the array, not within it.
I thought that their comment on curbing also related to traffic flow and helping to establish the lanes and prevent cutting through. I thought it was more than the landscaping.
I think on their original review, they commented on that, but I don't believe in their last review. I think it was more towards adding curbing with planting within the array is up to the board's purview, and we've asked for a waiver from that condition. We, the letter's here, we can go through it again, but that's my recollection of what they were talking about.
So, do we want to take, I think, through the Hancock, and then we can go through the Lisa Eggleston one, and I think as we go through, I just, this is really more for the board than anything else. What should we, should we just march through this? Yeah, okay. So, 11, 2, there's two comments, and then there's a series of review comments. Are they the review comments from the last time that are just appended? Is that...
These are updated on page two, these were the previous...
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay, so...
So they did review this last modification.
So anything on the first two that people have questions on? The 11, 2 review comments? So all they're saying there... So, all they're saying there, I think, is that this doesn't really change any of the prior comments. Okay, so we can move into the, page three. Any questions on number three? I mean, clearly, there's enough space on this entire property. So if the comment just directs the, is directed to the number of spaces, we know that that's okay. I mean, what I would say is, I don't know if that's the intent of this one, but does everybody feel that the, the whole traffic pattern and flow is well laid enough out? Is there sufficient signage? Is it, you know, Peter, to your point? Are there, is the curbing sufficient? Or, you know, are there any issues just in terms of how parking will work if these things, these are razor here?
I have the arrays.
I'll have to go back to that past. The arrays behind those cooling towers are adjacent to the main tractor-trailer route that comes down the side of the south parking lot. And the tractor-trailer route to the loading dock is actually through the middle of those. That's where I felt that if the curbing needed to be delineated, it was somewhat in that general area. So, again, I'll bring that up.
I have an image of, yeah, truck route, roadway on the south side, some package.
Yeah, I think that's what you're looking at. And then truck route barriers.
So, we had a blue area actually on here.
So the main truck route comes right, Regina, where you pointed out that filling station, right above the number two, and it comes down. And then the truck route, my understanding, would go in the widest space in this blue area. They'd actually turn that way, and it's a straight shot into the loading dock area, which is this area.
So, the width of that area that Jean's talking about, if we, I mean, that's wider?
That's wider than this room. It's huge.
Yep.
It's 51 feet wide.
Right. I guess my concern is more the delineation of the roadway, which is just a white area at the end of these runs. The black hashed area is pavement hashing, so that the trucks will maybe make that radius turn into this widest area, which is close to 60 feet wide. There's no curbing delineating anything of that main driveway down that whole side of the property.
Well, of course not, there is no road markings at all.
There's no road markings. The road markings are outside this area that you showed on your plans. And that whole truck route, roadway on the south side has absolutely no visible road markings on it.
Meaning centerline road markings?
Centerlines, edge of pavement lines, no passing, you know, there is no, there is no markings at all.
It's, it's the same as, you know, this section where they removed them in the yellow area. There's no delineation between that end of the roadway and the parking area. That's all on, that's all.
And then to the point on Jean's item, on that, where the truck-turning lane is, I know the width of it. There's currently some old concrete blocks that are in that with some signage. Are those blocks where the road's going to be? Are those blocks going to be removed? They're not, certainly not to code as far as a barrier. And all trucks and delivery signs, I would hope, aren't going to be the permanent signs, which are mounted to a chunk of concrete sitting in the middle of a road. Is that going to be the actual road or for the deliveries? Because it also doesn't line up with the gates. It's off-center with the carport. So, if you're going to have a truck turning, they shouldn't have to jog out of there. It would make no sense to have an 18-wheeler jogging.
Dean, where is actually the dock? I still can't even tell.
The drive-in is right here, sorry. Right here, and the loading dock is right here. And this is the lineup, which will go through these arrays.
To get to the loading dock, are they going to have to back in?
No, they can, no, they can drive in.
But then how do they back in?
There's enough room to turn around.
There is enough room to turn around.
But this, see, these blocks here don't line up with the gates.
Yeah.
And so that's what I'm asking.
Can you just let us know what we're looking at, so that we can understand what the question is?
The truck, the truck driving between the? On section three, yep. I mean, section two, the blue. You have three solar rows. Jean's going to pull it up. And you have the aisle for the truck deliveries for the rear of the building, where there is a wider drive coming from the south side.
Oh, that's on the other side?
Yeah, just take a look. We, you shortened the solar panels for the trucks to make the turn?
Will we stripe it at the ends of the rows? Is that where you're?
Nope, you actually shortened, past the filling station.
What, what gets this? I thought we mapped what the period of consult was looking for. Were we, were you talking about, will we shorten these two rows and we put in stripe it?
Yeah.
To identify it and mark it, so that it is demarked on the plan and differentiated?
But, are these, are these concrete blocks staying? And are these don't, are these, and these lining up with the gates? Because right now, they don't line up with the gates.
Concrete blocks?
Yeah, sure.
What sheet are you looking at there?
Yeah, what sheet does the, this one?
Sheet 10, sheet 10. So, I'm not sure that's the end of this row.
You definitely have a carport on each side of that.
I hire a traffic consultant for this.
And this is the roadway going into it, where there's no lines? And that's the roadway. Shooting in from the end, that's where the carport would be, and that's the roadway.
Laura, I sent them a link on it.
I don't understand exactly what the issue is, because they. So, it, it seems to line up very well with, you know, the truck entrance coming into the, to the roadway? I, that's just where I'm confused.
So are you removing the ones that do not line up currently? That's my question. You current, the current, the current concrete blocks and driveway do not line up with the gate.
Oh, we'll talk, we'll, we'll talk to Miller about that, the concrete blocks.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying. The current traffic lane does not currently line up. Are you replicating the, it over the currents? There's no, there's no landmarks here on these plans to know if you're moving it over five feet, so it lines up or not.
So, you're saying, the existing conditions aren't shown on the proposed plan?
Right.
So your question is, as to anything that's an existing condition, to the extent that it would be in the middle of a carport or a traffic or a roadway that's shown on the plans, can we confirm that we would be removing anything that would be an impediment or a barrier?
And it would, and it, and the travel lane would now line up with the existing gate opposed to it, the way it's configured now? It does not line up with the gate, which is nonsensical, in all honesty. Fix, that's what I'm saying, fix it, make it so it lines up, so trucks can. But there definitely needs to be markings on the roadway. There's no roadway markings.
Yes.
On the site, which isn't included.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah, you have to, I mean, there have to be clear paths for trucks to get in, so they know exactly in the new environment, how they're supposed to go and where they're supposed to go.
Well, that's not, that's not just trucks, that's just travel lane.
Well, travel, yeah, it's a, it's a general travel thing, but.
Yeah, the whole south side needs to be lined. There's no, there's absolutely no roadway markings visible on that south side. And there's very, very little lighting on that south side roadway, too, which is outside the area of the panels. But that's, you're going to have panels there which are obscuring some of the views.
Okay, so.
That's traffic.
Yeah, traffic. So you've got that. The item number four on this is the lighting, and you just segued into the lighting. So, I can't tell, the response seemed to say there's a lighting plan, but that doesn't really answer all their questions, is the way I read it.
If you, if you go to the slide that we had up earlier, that in fact is the lighting plan with the canopies, you know, sections one, two, three, four, and five, superimposed. Specs were provided to Hancock. And Hancock's conclusion was, if you go to, Dan, correct me.
As well, as well as our memo for compliance with the International Illumination Society standards.
The applicant stated the issue was resolved at a later date, described in a site lighting narrative. Planning board may condition any approval that the final approved site lighting plan ensures the minimum horizontal illuminance level is met for all areas affected by the development. And, and we agree. I, I mean, we think that's.
Okay.
So, the design is up to the bill that you scheduled? Because in all honesty, it not be able to see all of them.
So they figure out exact locations.
Right, they would provide evidence to us that it meets the IES standard for lighting.
But that would also include the access roads to get to, not just the carport site.
All areas affected by the coast development. I think that's what Hancock has asked us.
Well, you have to get to the proposed development. I think your lighting, your lightings already should be meeting that code right now, so. Because your site shouldn't be open if you don't have proper lighting, so. Yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's the lighting one. The next one is number five. This is the landscaping. So, what do people think? I think the landscaping solve, has multiple utilities in addition to just making the thing look a little bit better. It actually helps channel the flow.
Yeah.
And demarc.
Drainage, we talked about drainage, right? For the snow and melting.
Yeah.
So I think we're saying no waiting.
Yep. Okay, so that's the landscaping.
So, I'm sorry, what was the question?
So can you walk us through what you proposed on the landscaping?
Yeah, so what we did on the landscaping was we took everything and put it outside the canopies on the theory that because of the shade that they're casting and the current use as a completely paved parking surface, we thought that there would be more value in doing landscaping and buffering outside of the parking lot as a whole. We've designed the arrays with the snow guards and, you know, all of the features that would prevent the issues. And if, to the extent that you try to put like small strips of green space in between the canopies, what's going to happen is the grass is going to die. It's, it's not going to take, it's not going to grow. It's not, you know, this is a barely sizable commercial slash industrial parking lot. And so we felt as though we could get more value by doing significant plantings and screenings around the outside instead of within the parking space.
So that proposal is, this is to the top of the screen, Osgood Street, the south main exit, entrance and exit. And what was proposed for buffering was evergreen, if I remember right, eight to 10-foot high evergreen plantings, approximately 22 or so on this side of the lot, as well as to the north. That dark line here is a similar footprint of evergreens, eight to 10 feet high. And so the screening is from the Osgood Street.
Can I go back to the other side for a second?
Yeah. This, this is the past one, I'm assuming this didn't change.
We, we took trees that matched what was on the adjoining lots.
Color one, just takes a long time to come up. John, they have this in color, do you want me to bring up the color one?
They're white, white pines?
I was just wondering, is there an existing row of screening all across closer to the parking lot? What are those things?
So those are, there are existing plantings along this parking lot.
Where, can you?
So, right, these are plantings, right?
These are.
Yes.
These are.
We have some, so we have some colored images on the other flooring set as well. It showed.
The, the, this is with perspectives from the street and some. Yeah.
So, this, of the amended sheets? So, did you want sheet three? Sheet three?
The, you know, the, the native trees in the area, white pine and red oak, white oak, that's all up in that area. Even when you look across the street, there's a nice cluster of white oak right in front of the, is a microwave engineering building right there. They, to me, is, if you, if you stand down there in that parking lot, I, I don't see how you could put anything but white pine if you want to have a year-round screen right there. It's just, it fits the, it fits the landscape. It was there 100 years ago. So, so, so if, Jean, if you could zoom into the south, perfect. So what's existing right now are these, so if, starting, starting on the bottom, there's four maple trees. Four hardwood trees right along the, they're, they're existing. They're, I think they've got to be 35 or 40 feet tall. They're huge, they're granddaddy trees, they're beautiful trees. Those stay. As you start to move further up, there's a row of screening that was put there, which is just a mixture of these six to probably 15-foot trees. There's some, I don't recall if some are evergreen, but just various shrubs and trees, as well as some additional. You can see those right up there. Maple trees, the three that are just to the, to the east of that. So what we're doing is, and so without any trees there, I think I've shown some pictures, too, as you're, as you're standing right across the street from the, from the gas station, from pump three. You can look across and barely see anything that's going on there because of the, the existing screening. So what we're doing is proposing these white pines just, just further to the east of that that we think will be a very good addition to the property. Eight to 10 feet?
10 feet?
Eight to 10 feet.
Yeah.
This is the type of landscaping that is sort of screening in the sense that, you know, one row to screen the whole background. But another part of landscaping is, you know, more integrated with the carports themselves. And I wonder if we could go back to the photos of the example carports? Because I'd like to ask about two things. One is the curbing issue, but also the sort of closer-in landscaping to the earlier discussion about, you know, you can't do it under the carports because there isn't any sun.
Yeah, yeah.
And it'll die. So, if we could pull up the, the photos of the example structures. Okay, so, start with the, right there. So, that's the one that is the proposed. And this is where you had made the point about the curbing here, I think you were saying, is because the post is on the edge. And the design you're going to use is the first post is further in. So now, go down to the Whole Foods one. Right there. So, here, just to try to get to the landscaping point, it seems to me that this kind of configuration, first off, these carports are similar to your point, where the first post is in, and the first post does not have curbing because it's inset. But what they've done instead is put curbing islands beyond the end, which to me serve two functions. One, it gives you that traffic flow and really good protection of the carports. But two, it creates an island, excuse me, an island for landscaping at the end of the rows, which still has exposure. still has exposure to the sun. And then coupled with the sort of at-a-distance screening, you've also got opportunities for landscaping right there and the benefit of the curves.
I completely agree with that. If I look at the master vision for this site, it looks like there's greenery and landscaping throughout and it's like a nice pleasant place to be even if you're in a parking lot. Whereas if you look at these, it sort of feels like you're just in this industrial wasteland if you're in the parking lot because there's no greenery anywhere. So I was really hoping to see some greenery somewhere in the parking lot.
Well, our bylaw calls for a parking lot, you know. You know, we have to have, you have to have landscaping within the parking.
I think part of it is, it's an existing parking lot. It's already paved. We are adding things to improve it. And one of the things that we've been talking about all along is leaving the existing parking lot. I mean, at this point, we're leaving 77% of that parking lot alone and we're moving as much of it out of that parking lot with the theory that what this board and the Board of Selectmen want is to preserve the opportunity to bring future retail in and over there. And I think the theory would be when that, when somebody comes and wants a building, as you say, in the master plan with the trees and the shrubs around it, that would be part of a development when we get a tenant that wants to build over there.
But I think it would be much more attractive to an area that is inviting and pretty and...
So we just narrowed down, you know, six, six rows down to two. So, you know, anything, it's a, it's a very small area.
I think you clearly understand where we want, what the consensus of this board is. So that's, so I'd like to move on at this point. This is something we think is important. You're asking for a waiver. We'll take it under consideration in our decision-making. So let's.
Yeah. Well, so now we've got a, but now we've got, you know, you can't just create, something's got to go. So now it's parking spaces that go and, or it's the aisleways that have to change. Understood. Thank you for the comment.
Moving right along, number six is bicycle parking areas. I don't know if anybody has a.
So they picked that up later at the end. If you look at their site visit comment number three, they're all set with that. It was in here twice. It's on page 10. If you go back to the end, they determine that proposed development does not affect existing conditions of gate, bike rack, handicap ramp. These issues are resolved.
Which one of the site visit comments is it? Try them.
Site visit item three on the top of the last page, and they both deal with whether or not the locations of existing bicycle parking areas and racks should be shown.
So it's show location, and you're going to do that?
No, he's saying they're not being affected. So he doesn't, doesn't see that we would need to show that.
Okay. But we know where they are.
We know where they are. And the truth of the matter is you can't ride a bike on 114. So why Lucian ever put them, I'm sorry, 125? So we're not sure why Lucian ever put them in to begin with because he can't ride a bike down the street there.
Okay. Okay. That's fine. Okay. Seven is resolved. Eight is resolved. Nine is resolved. 10 is resolved. 11, we know what the issue is there. Your square footage on the ground has gone down, correct?
Yeah, this gone from 400 to 202.
So, okay. I'm going to step over that for now. Okay. 14, 12, 13, 14 are all resolved. 15, Lynn, I know you, there were certain things you wanted to get on the plans that are, you know, like I think you're, just your comment about those stone things. Are there other site features that you want on the plans that are not on there?
Well, it's other site concerns that neither Hancock nor Eggleston addressed because they were technically outside of the work area, but they're directly related to the work area. On the south side entrance to the building, you have your handicap parking adjacent to the handicap ramp, which makes sense. But the handicap ramp is not ADA compliant because there's no handrail. That handicap ramp also has a trench drain, so we need to know where that trench drain is going, if that's going into these proposed storm scepters that are going to be done. That was a new addition, obviously, because of the blocks that was done probably in the past 10 years. So that is a new water infiltration system on the property. But that handicap ramp is not acceptable. There's no handrail. I don't know who built it, when it got built, but your handicap spaces are all abutting this, but you can't get into the building.
So this is addressed in condition number 19. Comment number 19 on page nine.
No, that just addresses the spaces. You're putting in handicapped spaces with no way for people to get from the spaces to the building. So what's the point of having handicapped spaces if they can't get to the building? The handicap spaces are all adjacent to the ramp, but the ramp's not built to code. Also, the walkway that is adjacent to those handicap spaces needs to be replaced. There, it's not 42 inches wide. It's, there's a pavement shoulder on it and there's two-foot-long chunks of concrete that are taken out of it. So it's not handicapped accessible. It's sort of like a farce in some ways.
It's our intention to make them compliant, to make that area.
But that's, but that's not, you didn't say anywhere in the plan that you were doing those areas. The ramp has to be to code. The walkway in front of the spaces has to be done.
The tour place.
Then, then when you get past that, across that fire travel lane, the interior handicap ramp isn't to code either. I mean, that's falling apart. And then down back where the nets is, you have all the handicap parking spaces and there's no way to get from those parking spaces to the building. You have the entrance on the west side, which has the turnstiles. The grade on that's not handicapped accessible. And you have stairs from the west side that are crumbling, which are, they're not even pedestrian accessible. So I don't know how you're putting these, what are these parking spaces for if they can't get to the building? So I really think you guys need to look at the condition of the property as a whole that you're putting in, you're trying to encourage, you know, people to use these carports and use this parking and stuff like that, having sheltered parking, improving the property, but then there's no way to get to the property safely. And that's what we've been talking about all along, about the paving, the fixing the walkways and things like that. There's a ramp on the north side leading out of a building that's going to lead into a travel lane. It's probably about six feet long, eight feet wide to a, where, and there's no mention of removing that ramp, closing off that entrance way. There's also a gate and fence on the west side that's falling down with barbed wire that leads to the stairs on one side, but there's no gate protecting these, someone from walking down these stairs and, that are crumbling. So I really think you need to get an ADA person in and look. North walkway, same thing. Stairs leading down with no handrails. You have jersey barriers protecting people from driving across the lawn, which, so I really think you should look at, you know, putting some landscaping there, get rid of the jersey barriers, put some trees in. That'll stop people from.
Can I ask what that has to do with the proposed project?
Because you're putting in handicapped parking spaces. Your property should have already been accessible, but you have a handicap parking spaces have no way to get to the building safely. And I think you, it's, why, don't put them in then. You're putting, are they parking to go across the street to the gas station? I mean, there's no way for them to get to the building. How is someone from the wet, pick, pick a side. How are they going to get into the building from these handicap parking spaces by code? Any side. Tell me.
I think certainly I agree with most of your comments, but, but not all. Let me explain. Our intention when we were working with Joe Pesnoller and Hancock on this was wherever we're proposing spaces to make them handicap compliant, we came up with restriping paving for handicap spaces based on spaces we were displacing. There are existing handicap spaces on all four sides of the building. We didn't make up the spaces. We placed them in different locations. Starting on the west, which is the worst side, they go nowhere. The existing spaces go nowhere. We felt it important to propose spaces there because we were replacing spaces that went nowhere. The places on the west go, I can't say it to anybody, they go nowhere. You can't use those handicap spaces and get to the building today unless major renovations are made. On the south side, everything that you explained, I agree 100%. And we actually, from, from, the south side, right where the bus drop-off station is, is where we had most of them proposed. And Joe Pesnoller asked us to move them over to where we did in the other parking lot, not even where we're putting up the array, because there's a walkway there that actually leads to an entrance way that's more handicap accessible than the existing bus stop. That's why we moved more handicap accessible. The walkway's in tough shape. Like, granted, I can't, I'm not going to stand here and tell you it's not. But that's why we moved those over there, because the, the handicap accessibility at the bus stop is pretty tough. And it's a lot better over there. But we agreed in principle to make the proposed spaces handicap accessible. I don't think we wanted to limit that to just the space itself. That would be insane. So on this south side, I would agree that the condition that we would make that upon submitting to the building department would, those would be reviewed. On the north side, we pretty much did the same thing. Relocated parking spaces, provided pedestrian walkways. And if there is issues at the building that we need to look at more closely, we can do that upon submitting of the building permit. On the east side, we're not proposing anything there and there's, there's significant spaces there.
I mean, I think that there's clearly a nexus between the handicap parking and this project. And to the extent that there's a nexus, we want to insist on certain things because they, they make sense. So let's, you've captured everything that Lynn is.
Just to clarify on the west side, see, if someone isn't, needs a handicap spot and they park, by nature of a handicap spot being marked as a handicap spot, there's a presumption that that spot is accessible to a building by means of a standard grade and stuff like that. Wouldn't it make sense to remove them from the west side if their parking spaces, if they cannot get out of a, if they're in a, you know, situation, they park at a handicap spot and they can't get to the building?
I would agree 100%. I can tell you, nobody's using those spaces. They're so far away.
But then don't mark them handicap.
Then we can take those off the plan.
And it's not ADA compliant.
Sure. I mean, we can, we can take the western ones off the plan.
Yeah. I mean, that's, that's, I don't mark them. Don't have an unsafe, don't create an unsafe situation for someone.
Happy to, as a point of approval, to take those off.
So moving in, I think sort of 15 and 16 were related to the discussion we just had then necessarily to some pictures. Let's go on to number 17, the order of conditions. And Gene, can you explain that one and whether that's, how that's relevant?
So initially, they're working off of a ANRAD plan that had expired this past April. There is a ANRAD plan from, in a budding property on Holt Road that has been incorporated in these plans. It is still valid. Jennifer has reviewed these and they have positioned the structures outside of the buffer zone to the delineated wetlands here on this.
So this is all okay at this point?
So.
Are there any conservation or wetland issues based on what they have now?
Jennifer has submitted correspondence that as far as what is on the plans, that the structures remain outside of the buffer zones of any known wetlands that have been delineated, been identified on this plan.
The, item number 18, even though we, says it's resolved, I think we had a discussion on that and that we, we need more clarity with signs and everything else about how you access those areas. Number 19, Lynn, do you think we've discussed that in the context of your list?
Yes. There should be non-parking spaces to nowhere for a handicapped person, so.
It would help to say that not only the parking places, but the building entrances comply with ADA and.
So moving into the site visit comments, are there any of those? The last one there is really the only one that's still open, right, Gene? Looks like the rest of them are all resolved.
Yes. Can I, going back to the handicap? We understand removing from the west. We understand bringing the sidewalks, bringing the ramps and so forth into compliance. With respect to entrances to the buildings, I don't think the applicant could agree to that as a condition. I mean, they meet ADA compliance to the extent that they need to, but there are some significant entrances to that property that either are pre-existing or have grandfather rights. And to say that all entrances would be handicap compliant, I think exceeds this.
Well, if the entrances served by the handicap parking places.
Again, the walkways, ramps, you know, sidewalks, curbing, slope, parking spaces.
Walkways?
I.
Well, I think you'll find that the north and south entrance ramps are, first of all, without even saying ADA, they're not acceptable to any OSHA, any current building regulation with the amount of potholes there are in that concrete and stuff like that. I don't, I think they're honestly, I don't think the building, if your insurance company came out that they approved the building beyond open without fixing the north and south entrances, where majority, I think, of the new handicap spots, which currently serve the building and would serve the building, would access the building. I don't think, I know what you're saying is all these small accessory entrances. I don't think we're talking about those. Is that what you're referring to?
I'm really talking about any entrance. I mean, I don't know whether we have, once you get inside the doors, whether there are elevators, whether there are ramps, whether there are.
I'm not saying inside the building, but those interior ramps, if you know what I mean, where the front parapet wall breaks up where your solar arrays are, those, those ramps are, sidewalks, ramps, those are not.
Yeah. Absolutely agree.
Those two, that's, those are the two I'm referring to.
The sidewalk ramps, I think we.
Can we just show those up on the drawing just so that we're all clear?
On the same page.
Didn't it have been that there was a turn?
Yeah, they're an interior. Yes, I wouldn't expect you to regrade them, but the two-foot-wide potholes that are two feet deep inside. Yep.
So if you, if you.
Right now, if you.
We're talking about this area right here?
I, Dan, I can't, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Gene, if you could.
Set, ask the one.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I think that's what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay.
So let me add some clarity to that. There used to be approximately 12, 13, 14 handicap spaces proposed at the bus stop location. Joe Pesnoller asked us to move them over to the right where you can see it right there proposed on the right-hand side.
I understand. So you're saying that we're here and Joe asked us to move it here?
Yes.
That's correct. And the, and the reason being was the existing accessibility to the building at the bus station, Joe didn't believe was there. He felt we should leave a couple of there for people that wanted to pull up there and use the bus stop and move the rest over to the other parking lot where the sidewalk that we've talked about that's in disrepair leads to the building that is handicap accessible. that we've talked about that's in disrepair leads to the building that is handicap accessible. So the intention was is to, to have the accessibility over in the other parking lot because the building is more accessible than it is near the bus stop. That was the direction that we took from, from Joe Pesnola.
Well, that's probably accurate because the switchback on that ramp is, looks to be close to what the proper grade is, I'm not positive, but close.
I agree with that.
So that I can relate to the client, you, you're talking about here?
No.
Okay.
There's a, where the, there's a covering right now and with a ramp.
Here?
Yes, where there's a ramp right there.
Yep.
That, that sidewalk where all the handicap parking spaces in front of that is in disrepair, and that's where I think the loading is of the handicap now currently proposed. That ramp does not have a handrail. That ramp was built in the.
This, this one, yeah.
Yep, yep. And that ramp was built fairly recently. I don't know how it got built without a handrail, because that's been code for a long time. And the walkway where it crosses the fire lane.
Here.
Appears to be close to a handicap grade. I'm not positive, but it's, it's fairly close. It, it probably is okay. And that, then that entrance seems also to be accessible.
I believe when laser grates went in there or when the college went in there, they did have to go through that.
Right. So that, that entrance seems, I mean, I didn't shoot grades, but it seems fairly accessible. So that would make sense to have the handicap parking there for the building because that's accept, accessible. It's fixing that to make it, you know, it looks like someone tried to do it, but didn't do it 100%.
Okay.
They didn't put the handrail in. I don't, you know, the blocks are, I think they needed to have a stop possibly at the bottom of it, but, you know.
I mean, we're not asking you to go through the whole building.
No.
But if you're doing a parking lot, if it's, that part of it's got to be ADA and that ends when somebody gets inside a building.
They park in the space, they think there's, there's supposed to be a safe roof from that space to the building. That's the presumption of a handicap space. It's not, it's not to park there and never get out of your car, you know?
I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm just confused for a moment. What Joe Pesnola told us to do was move.
As many spaces as we could over to the other parking lot. And I think what you're saying is opposite of that.
No, I'm saying keep them there. That's where they are. That's where, the car plan, no.
What Joe did is he had us, there were 14 here, and he had us move eight here. And his thinking was these would be just for the bus stop and these would be because you can come straight in here on a level three.
That's, that one, that grade's horrible, I don't think.
Well, the grade's fine, the sidewalk's terrible.
Okay. Well, I don't think.
It's virtually flat.
I don't think the grade interiorly, when you get to the building.
Well, that was Joe's opposite comment. Honestly, he said the building's more accessible on that, that's why we moved them there than this one is. And I walked to both entrances and quite frankly, I couldn't see the difference on the accessibility at the building entrance. Definitely see the problem at the bus stop.
Right. Okay, so that's what, that's who you're calling is the bus stop? Okay, I didn't, that's what the little carport, as far as the bus, does the bus actually stop there?
Well, it used to.
Okay. Okay, just curious. A shuttle, okay. The former bus stop, okay. Okay, yeah, that one, that one, that ramp needs to be fixed. And then on the other side, I think maybe, you know, you, you, you have to fix the sidewalk. I mean, that's even a pedestrian obstacle. I mean.
Yeah, that's those.
That's not even a handicap obstacle, that's a pedestrian obstacle, yeah.
If the condition toward the ramp and the rail here and the sidewalk here, we are on the same.
And then the sidewalk on, when you get into that, that concrete sidewalk interiorly right there, yeah, yes.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Um.
So number seven, Jean?
Yeah, number seven, the last one. It's the tractor trailer training school.
So that use in the parking lot is? In the same footprint as the west side canopy, so the section here is currently used by NETS Tractor Trailer School. This came up at an earlier meeting as well. The board asked where they would be relocated to. I guess there was.
Well, I don't think, I think we were only concerned about where it's going to be, but we look into it, it's going to stay on the same property. Because we want to understand the impact. We don't care if it gets sent off-site, but.
Right.
We want to make sure there's no impact between the new thing and the, the trial. Are you going to keep it on-site or, I mean, not the?
We have not made a decision yet.
Okay, so we would then, if, if we were to do so, condition it that it couldn't come within a certain distance of that. And that would clearly have to be segregated for safety reasons. We don't want somebody backing up a truck into the.
Right, we would not redesign the tractor trailer school so it was doing, around the solar canopy for practice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Lynn, did you, I know, do you have any further questions or comments about that?
Just down, I mean, just down where that tractor trailer site is, I mean, you guys got to fix the barbed wire and the fences that are falling down and things like that. If that's not coming down as part of the project, I mean, that's a current building code violation if you have barbed wire hanging on the ground. And it's also a safety issue for your client and your insurance company. Fences are falling down with barbed wire on it. I don't know if that's planned to be taken down with putting up the panels or if not, but.
Can we go back to the driving, the truck school?
No.
Someone call that, would you personally?
Yes.
So my, my question would be, if it's going to stay on-site, is, and if it's going to somehow affect the soccer fields in that area, I mean, does that come within our purview? Like, that if they ripped out the, the soccer fields that they use for the town, for the driving school? That's why, that's, you know, there's other concerns about the, where they're going to put this trucking place if it's going to stay there.
Well, I certainly, and again, I can't speak with the applicant because I have not had this specific question, but I cannot imagine that they would pay the cost to tear up and pave over a soccer field to put a driving school there.
Well, I would hope not.
From a stormwater perspective, from a detention perspective, from the fact that we would have to come back here in front of you in Cidio and tell you we're tearing up the soccer fields to put in a, a.
But so is that part of something that we can make a condition because?
Well, I mean, you, you could condition that they have to come back with their plans and we approve them.
I think that's important.
It's a, it's a 40R. We can't come back and do it without.
Okay, I just want that clear.
Well, the tractor trailer school went in without us.
Yeah. And they have some kind of other driving that impact driving.
It never came to us to have a tractor trailer school on-site. So to move it, I would presume that they would, the plan would have been the same not to come to us, so.
Yeah, well, we would just condition that with us.
I just think it's a big thing for the town.
It's a, it's a big.
The soccer fields are really important.
It's also, that's the, the business zone, so that maybe it had underlying zoning. I'm not sure what the building inspector looked at when they did it. But to go to the mixed use or the residential zone would also be a different zone.
I just want that clear.
You know, I remember in 2007, they seen in the newspaper that that, we were going to use, lose the use of those soccer fields.
As part of the TIF.
Not as part.
No, 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 as, as part of the TIF.
That was entered into, I think, right around that time.
Okay.
The part that gave the town the use of the space in the buildings. There was also a free use of the fields. It had a set period of time, and then it renews one year at a time, I think in the spring of each year. But it, it was part of the TIF at the time. So we did protect that for the town. It might have expired when the lease just expired for the space. It might have been a 10-year, but I think it goes year to year and has year to year renewals.
Okay. Okay. So let's move on to the Eggleston Environmental. Which note should we look at here, the October 20th one?
I think Lisa's memo, October 20th, that we made the.
Yeah, October 20th, yeah, Lisa's.
Yep.
Is that the one we should look at? So can you, Jean, lead us through this? Because I just want to make sure I understand all the nuances, and I don't think I do.
So the bylaw under Osgood required some conditions that Lisa felt were appropriate under the bylaw. There was discussions whether the mass regs were.
Can I just ask a question about October 15th or October 20th?
October 20th.
So one of the pages is dated October 15th. I just want to make sure I'm looking at the same thing.
It's both an October 15th and an October 20th. The October 20th is one page printed on both sides.
Okay, thank you. Got it.
So Lisa acknowledged the mass state regs were debatable. However, the bylaw called for some improvement to stormwater for a development or a redevelopment. Either way, it's triggered. With that being said, they had at least one meeting on-site and several consultations with the peer review. The plan proposes to have three storm scepters installed on the south side, and the drainage plan was submitted. That would provide treatment, again, to the south side, even though the footprint is being changed now mostly to the west side, there's no treatment today. So it would still be a net improvement to the lot itself. Given that, this memo then identifies some conditions that Lisa would recommend be implemented along with what is being proposed. And she's really deferring to the board whether you accept what's being proposed or if you felt more was required in terms of treatment in the.
So actually, number two is the project that is currently proposed would not fully meet the requirements of Section 111115 in that it only provides some degree of treatment for a portion. So she's saying.
On the south side.
Technically, it's, it should cover the whole property.
Yes.
Okay.
Again, technically, and she's deferred to the board in terms of reasonable improvement to the stormwater treatment, so.
So, okay, so that's what we have to decide. Does anybody have any specific questions on this?
On the north side, there's a trench drain that's completely failed. As a matter of fact, it would go past my ankle where you could step into it with the grates met. Does not look like it's ever been cleaned out. I don't know where it connects to. And the catch basins have no sumps, so it doesn't make sense that you'd have a trench drain going to nowhere. And that wasn't shown on the plan, but it's right along with the fences between the, the two parallel and perpendicular panels meet. And it's pretty, pretty long. So I don't know what's the plan. I don't know how that isn't going to be proposed, even being fixed and something done with it. Plus, someone can kill themselves in it.
So if I remember, it's a part of the electric car recharging station.
Yeah.
And it just runs kind of perpendicular to the building. And it was 10, 15 feet long, I think.
As part of our on-building conversations with Lisa Eggleston, in dealing with the record conditions plan and the vast site that it is, and understanding the lengthy history of the site, we did some serious, serious digging into historical archives to try to figure out what the existing stormwater situation was out there, to come up with a plan that we felt was practicable to achieve the goals that she in particular was looking for. And that being treatment of stormwater. And through a lot of difficult digging on-site with ex-lucent employees, we came up with the plans, or a, a good portion of the plans, that really depicted the largest portion of stormwater running from, off-site actually, from Osgood Street, the east parking lot and the south parking lot were the ones contributing the direct discharges through the catch basin drainage systems into wetland-protected areas. The area on the west side that we've been talking about virtually has no drainage there whatsoever, so making practicable improvements there is not practicable. The area where you're just speaking about that trench drain, it is a nightmare to try to understand what's going on out there. We pulled all the catch basin covers. There are no sumps. There's very, very limited ability to improve the situation up there. So what we did in working with Lisa Eggleston is we took a contributing area for our entire project and matched it on-site. Who cares where we're doing it? We took other parking lots, namely portions of the parking on the north side, portions of the parking lot on the south side, that do have in-place significant drainage systems that directly discharge to wetland areas and treated them. So it's a comparable area. And since we're not changing the water quality, we're putting glass on top of pavement, there isn't a water quality issue, but we met the intent of our site being X amount of acres, we're treating X amount of acres. It's just not necessarily coming from the carport areas. It's coming from other areas that are the only sensible, practical way we can make those improvements. By putting three significant storm scepter systems in, and they are significant, to treat the water, we've met the intent of, of what we're doing because we can't really put storm scepters in on the western side unless we implement an entire new drainage system. There's no catch basins out there to speak of. On the northern side, it's a spaghetti mess. We really can't, and nobody can figure out what's going on out there. I know the drainage trench you're talking about, I don't know where it goes. I have, I haven't a clue. I mean, if you want to have us look at that and clean it out, that's not a big problem to clean out one catch basin. But that whole northern area is, is just, it gets so difficult to figure it out that Lisa and we worked on the southern edge in an area comparable to what we're doing and try to get the, mimic the treatment, but not necessarily underneath the carports.
Well, that concerns me even more, saying that you have drains that you have no clue where they're going to. They could be discharging directly into the wetlands on the north side, is what you're saying, because you don't know where.
I don't know why that would be a concern. It's been that way for 100 years.
Okay, there's a lot of things that have been that way for 100 years.
But we're not changing water.
But that's our role to.
Understood, understood. But we worked this out with Lisa. We also worked it out with Jennifer. And what we did was we came up with a treatment in, and she even mentions it in her letter, a vastly improved treatment comparable to the area that we're working in, in the area that is practicable. It is not practical, whether we know where the drainage is going on the north side or not, to do systems up there because of the way that, that system is constructed. It is practical on the southern side to intercept the drainage lines that are directly discharged into the wetlands and put in three significant systems that will treat the stormwater that we're talking about.
And I think you'll see that Lisa's memo does say that the final decision is the board.
She absolutely does, but she.
Yeah, when you're saying that you worked it out with Eggleston and you worked it out with Conservation, it's still our purview, so.
It most certainly is.
So that's why I'm bringing it up. I think it's a great concern not knowing where the north goes.
So that's, that one, the drainage, the O and M plan. Does anybody take a, a detailed look at that?
So you have a hard copy of that. I, I have a question related to the cleaning out of the catch basins on the north side. So it calls for four times a year and cleaning them out, but without the deep sumps and the sediment, would there be any sediment in those to clean? No, right? So the north side doesn't have the deep sumps. The, the storm scepters on the south are going to have sediment, and the plan calls for maintenance and cleaning out of those at certain triggers. I think Lisa recommended, we, I don't think we got to it yet, but a sweeping, parking lot sweeping program that maybe that would help take up any of the debris and sediment in the parking lot. I don't know if that could be conditioned in the O and M plan as well.
Did Lisa take a detailed look at this or did we just get this?
What is it, the O and M plan?
The O and M plan.
She's, she's reviewed it.
Yeah. Okay. Um, I think we've gone through all the peer review reports. Is there any other reports we need to look at?
Did you see Lisa's, reviewing items that used to have a cold car base?
Oh, yeah.
Should be conditioned.
Right. And she said the final, there have to, we have to get.
Design of the storm scepter.
Yeah, okay. So.
Yeah, I mean, the, the north went to the point that we don't know where it's rated to or the drainage plans, but they, the north and west drain to the stormwater ponds around the property. So that is where it's going, but the improvement has been to the south side in this plan.
Yeah. So we, are there, so we've been through Lisa's, we've been through Hancock, there's no more peer review that we have.
The other item was, it was submitted from last meeting, but all evidence was from the butter that spoke at the meeting previous to that submitted some more comments.
It was not in a butter, it just.
I'm sorry, you're right. It was a resident, not in a butter. They spoke.
Could you do a segmentation?
Yep. He was concerned about the electricity, that it was going to be. He was concerned about the electricity, that it was going to be, he wanted to make sure it was underground and it's all going to be trenched, so all the electrical lines.
Natural electric, yes.
He talked about the photos, the trees are going to lose their leaves in the winter. Again, some of this buffering plan was intended to have a pine tree, which would provide more screening from the Osgood side. I'm not sure about this, but he indicated that the master plan showed one building to the north, and there should have been two.
There's three images of master plans on websites and things, so just-
The one that was shown here had three on the north side and one on the south side.
Yeah.
The 145 square foot one to the south appeared to be in the footprint of the canopies when there was six and seven of the canopies. Now that there's only two-
Not anymore.
It appears to me it is outside of that footprint now, but I did agree it seemed to be in the same footprint as that retail building. And then just in general, he comments that this was not what was intended in the master plan, and doesn't agree with the development, so. So he, one of the town officials, to do what they can to possibly, to preserve the potential promise of the master plan.
So any other comments, questions from the board? So we're, you know, we're sort of pretty much through this, and I think we're ready to make a determination. If I look at the timing, I think we-
I'm sorry, I do have one more comment.
Okay.
Related to pavement and potholes. I know that had come up in previous, and I'm now flipping through the responses to the bylaw related to a concern on the parking, the pavement structure and the ability to hold these structures and that it's not too dangerous. So I don't know if the board wanted to comment any further on the pavement.
Right, I mean, I think partly that's going to be addressed through the building permit, because if the structure is bad, but there's also a part of it that if you miss your window of opportunity to fix the mess on the ground, you'll miss your window of opportunity, so.
If I could make one brief comment. Gene, can you scan in the north side? Keep going in.
Okay. Further?
The array on your furthermost left is, right there, is the location where both Lisa and Joe were concerned about. If you go out there, there's significant, I wouldn't even call them potholes, they look more like there were piles there once before for a building, and we have agreed to repave that entire parking lot. There's no way, we can't put a structure up with it in that condition.
Yeah.
So that's the area that they were concerned, and we have agreed to repave that entire area.
So the footprint of those two canopies for the most part?
So the north, last two canopies in section five-
Correct.
I'm sorry, section four of the plan. Okay.
How about the other ones?
It's going to be done on an as-go basis. If it needs to be repaired, it'll be repaired as we do it. I think one of the questions, or one of the answers that we mentioned at the last hearing where evidence was presented, is that we have spoken to some people, and the suggestion is, is that we do the work, because we're going to be just as likely to cause damage in building the project as we would if we wait so that, at the end of the day, the net-net-net cost effect of getting it done and doing it is, you know, as you go, you would address it rather than trying to repair everything beforehand, build the project, then you're going to come back and have to repair everything again.
Well, I mean, I think what we would want would be, obviously, you showed us all these other locations, they've figured out how to solve that problem, I'm sure, so. They, I can't believe Staples or any of those people would leave pothole parking lots, that's-
I would think we would want some state that says that all the parking lot would be level and not have poles, bumps.
Yeah. How you do it is not necessarily our prerogative, but that it be done, so.
At the end of the day.
Okay. So moving, presumably nobody else has any other questions. At this point, we have, I think, my recollection is that the, our time window is vote tonight and have one more week. Is that correct?
It's a rendered decision by November 24th, so it's one more week.
Okay. So we're ready to render a decision, and I think you can get a pretty good idea of where we're headed, but frankly, one week isn't going to cut it because of the complexity of this one, and we would like the three, four weeks to do it. So that is our ask for you guys now.
I'm sorry. To actually write our decision and file it. We're ready to vote tonight, and you guys can read, I think, if, where we're going with this, but we need more time to file the decision than one week. Can I come forward?
You can, you can do whatever you want for a few minutes, we'll go off and we'll do something else. Do we have anything else, Gene? Do we have Peter's favorite topic?
Meeting minutes?
The conservation field inspector has informed the applicant, they need to remove the, you have to put an erosion control somewhere in there.
Okay.
That, it's right now, it's that they need to be removed.
Okay.
That was it for me. Anything, anybody have anything else?
Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Move, so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anything else?
Do you want to provide an update on the lake cleanup day? Which is Saturday?
Saturday.
Eight to one. Stevie's Beach Parking Lot. We'll provide bags, gloves, and hopefully some donuts and coffee.
Mmm.
Weather looks good. Saturday. Eight AM to one.
What type of stuff are we going to be picking up?
Bottles, cans-
Whatever's in the leg.
Dog toys is about the third-largest group of debris.
Is that right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
What about the other thing that comes from dogs?
It's there, but not able to pick it up.
Okay.
Yes. Dissolved.
Biodegradable and non-biodegradable.
Worthwhile bringing a grabber along?
We're going to have grabbers.
Ooh.
But if you've got one, bring one.
Okay. Good, great. Okay.
Thought number one, there was one additional piece of evidence that was submitted that I don't think was mentioned earlier, and that was a letter from town council that went through the voting. So if we are going to close this and vote, I just wanted to make sure that it was clear on the record that town council appined that this is a majority and not a supermajority vote.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. The second is, I hope that I'm reading where this is going, and if I am reading where this is going and you need three weeks to write a favorable decision, we would not have a problem with that. If the vote this evening were to deny it, I'm not sure that there would be a reason that you would need three weeks to write a denial. If that's fair.
I think that's a fair assessment.
Okay. Those would be my two concluding comments. Thank you.
So what you are saying is that if we do, we vote favorably this evening, you'll give us three weeks to write the decision?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? So, should we vote? And if we approve it, we're saying that all those conditions that we were talking about would, it's subject to all those things, no matter how we write them up, right? I mean, we don't have to go through each one now.
No, we don't have to go through each one.
Okay.
Can I ask a question on that?
Do you take a consensus? Like, there may be one condition that one of you wants, but the other four think is unnecessary. There may be a condition that two want, I mean, or do you just say, look, every single condition that was read into the record tonight is a condition, even though as a board you haven't looked at them and reached a consensus on those conditions?
I think, well, there's an element of sausage-making in anything, as you know, including this. We are, the thing that we would not do is, we would not take everybody's individual wish list, and whether one person wants one thing, it's got to be something that has substantial, you know, consensus of the board to do this. I mean, you know, but I'm not going to get pinned down to exactly what process we're going to go through to adjudicate every one of those.
Understood. But I guess my only comment would be that as you write the decision, that you take into consideration that, to the extent that there are conditions, that there are conditions that are favorably requested by the majority of the board. And I don't mean you have to go through line by line and have a vote on 27 conditions tonight, but I presume as you circulate a draft of your decision, you might include every single condition and ask board members, you know, could you please advise whether these are ones you strongly or don't strongly?
I mean, we have a robust discussion process, and it's, I think it's a, it's a fair process. I mean, I know this has been a long and arduous, you know, hearing, and it got contentious at times, but I think ultimately in the end, we're actually very fair and even-handed in what we do, and we're not sort of capricious and whimsical, just because, you know, I might have had words with you or with Mr. Leary sometime along the way, doesn't mean I'm going to hold it against you and stick out for one thing. It doesn't work like that. We treat everybody the same, and we'll treat you guys the same as we treat everybody else, and, you know, do what we think is fair and in compliance with the bylaw.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate it.
So at this point, what we, unless somebody wants to keep the hearing open, what I would recommend is that we first close the public hearing, and then we would make a motion to, warn the project to approve or deny if the case may be, and obviously, that would be subject to conditions that we would have to write, so.
I have one point that I want to get the board to weigh in on, because circulating the memo, I have a concern with the gaps between the panels. To Peter's point, I don't think putting a concrete berry in the middle of a row would make sense with the curbing and landscaping in between it. I think there'd be too much shade even for shade plants. I'd prefer to see those gaps closed up so there's non-ice condition, you know, three, four months out of the year. Let's have them put landscaping somewhere else and, but close up those gaps and maybe shorten up a panel on a row somewhere else. It would save them money.
Create the end cap to put the landscaping there.
Yeah, create the end caps or something like that, but let's close up those four-foot gaps throughout the property.
So structurally, is there any issue with that?
We would have no objection.
It would save the money, actually.
Okay, so safe, why?
No, 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 because originally they weren't, yeah. It would, and I'd rather see that if everybody agrees.
The end caps would tend to keep trucks from running into the-
Yeah, I definitely think on the south side-
The end caps, you're talking about the landscaping.
Yeah, I think on the south side, you definitely need the end caps where the truck turning is, and I think that would make sense.
We would do that, but we would, at least in the middle of the longer rows, have a walking path.
Right.
But we would cover it.
Right.
But we would create a walking path.
Yeah, marked delineation, but not, but keep-
Whatever the longest one is, if it's 400.
I think we could provide a degree of flexibility.
But it's a good idea to put in-
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we necessarily, you know, now that we've seen it, we want to hold them to that rigid design standard, because it may not work, so. We would probably ask them to come back with something that we would approve. Okay.
And I have one more question on the makeup of the panel itself. Is the glass portion exactly even with the sides, or are the sides slightly raised so that water wouldn't run over the end?
The glass frame that comes over the top of the modular, it's about a sixteenth of an inch tall, and it's about a quarter of an inch around the edge. It's just like your glass on your windows. It's, it's flat.
So would somebody like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
Will we close the public hearing?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. No. So now, what we would do is entertain a motion and direct the planner to make, to write a decision, and then I think it's also contingent upon the applicant providing us the three weeks to file a decision after we render it. So we vote to approve or deny, subject to conditions that we're going to work on, and that we have the, we will accept the three, the extension for three weeks, so.
So moved?
So to approve the project subject to that.
To approve the project, on those conditions.
Okay. Is everybody okay with that?
Second.
Motion made and seconded?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. So if you guys can give us your extension, we'll accept the, if somebody can make a motion to accept the written extension, to render a decision to three weeks?
Move, we accept the written.
Extension, so the three weeks is November 24th, which is the week of Thanksgiving. I just want to make sure everybody's availability is there to read this. Okay, okay, good.
Okay, so motion made to accept it?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, the dates are-
It's a little bit different than what we normally do, because we normally write them in advance, and we'll share drafts and probably, you know, audit the next meeting, we'll be two weeks where some special meeting or something will, you know, it is a little bit different.
You want to draw something?
Yeah, but it, you know, one of the things that would be helpful, I do think, is to provide a list of bullets of topics, just, you know, if everybody does that, if everybody can list the bullets of the topics they want covered, to Gene, and then Gene and I will start to work on it, and then share the draft as soon as we can.
Not right now, though.
Not right now.
No, you have to stay late until-
In the next 10 minutes, please. When you prepare a draft of the decision, will it be circulated? Would we have the opportunity to look at it? And then the second question is, if you have a special meeting to review the conditions, do you convene it so that we would at least be able to observe the discussion?
I mean, if that's the case, if we do it in our regular meeting, certainly it's-
It would be on the agenda.
-you would be able to do that. We can't, it's not going to be a negotiation.
Understood.
And technically, we can't hear sort of, you know, well, this is good, bad, or indifferent.
Correct.
If, you know, obviously, if there's something egregiously stupid that we did, we're not idiots, so, you know.
I also thought if you had a question, that if we were here and present, if you were having a discussion-
We would prefer to be advised, that's why we took so long tonight.
Okay.
So.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Anything else, Gene?
Nope, there is not.
Anybody got anything else?
Actually, one thing. I don't know how we're doing on getting the lake testing data to the board, because there's some changes at the water treatment plant, and I don't know if we're going to see that for a while, and that's a concern.
Are they changing their, who's in charge?
Yeah, well, the lab director.
The lab director.
Yeah.
Well, I saw the job posted.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's, that's a concern.
Is there any way we can push it along?
Well, I'm going to meet with her tomorrow, and I hope we can.
Okay.
I hope we can.
Well, let us know, we'll take some other-
I hope we can.
We'll lean on the town manager.
I think we need to see it. We need to see how we're doing.
Yeah.
Yes. Now, when are we going to adjourn all these plans?
Bonfire?
Bonfire.
It's like, it's like-
I could paper in my living room.
Yeah, that's right.
Are we on?
All righty, motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Make motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?